I'd like to call the regular meeting of the National Town Council to order. Please, would you please stand for the pledge?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, we invite you into this meeting to lead, guide us, and give us your wisdom in making the best decisions for our town of Nashville. At this time, on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. So after reading the minutes for March 9th, '21, are there any corrections?
Yes, on page three.
Page thirty, okay.
This is in reference to the C Keith closing. As the council member, Hampton, stated how she did not know the closure had occurred. I think I wanted to know, I think I mentioned that we needed to know when this occurred and why we weren't informed because they closed on the 23rd of December and we only found out March the 9th. And that was a big deal, they closed. And for some reason, there was a large gap in information, communication. And I was really surprised. I think everyone was blindsided. And that needs to be in the minutes.
Any other corrections? If not, do I hear a motion that we approve the minutes for March the 9th of '21?
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Now looking at the minutes for April the 20th, are there any corrections to those minutes?
There are no corrections, I move to the floor.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Now looking at May 11th minutes, are there any corrections to those minutes? If not, do I hear a motion that we approve?
Second.
There's a second?
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion, they are approved. At this time, where I have our public comments, do you have that list, Sarah? You will have three minutes to speak. Following the procedures for public speaking. Thank you. And remember, you come forward and you state your name and your address. James Baker. And by the way, our air condition has frozen and we have someone coming over to look at it.
Good afternoon. My name is James Baker. I live at 103 East Green Street. The item that I wanted to discuss is, I think there's a problem and I think that's why we got the people here. There's a lack of communication, transparency. You can go up to the town hall, and I'm not trying to ridicule anybody, but if we have an issue, and we've been, I've been up here before, about items that we need to be addressed, and nobody never gets back with us. Just a common courtesy call, maybe a week later, lets know what the follow-up is. You know, there was a while back, I went with y'all about, we got a problem on Green Street about signs. And my neighbor across the street and myself, we have health issues. And our street signs on our block are all wrong. And when we moved there, you can go on Google, we were East Green, all of a sudden, we became West Green. I've had medical issues, my neighbor across the street has medical issues, and God forbid, we have people come work on our house and they're going around the block because they can't find us because the street signs are all wrong. We got East Green, we got West Green, and we have one that says green. There's two West Greens. And from Austin, up, I think it's up there past, on the other side of South, Southeast First Street, that's all East Green. There's only actually one house that's West Green, that's on the opposite side of Austin. And I know that my neighbor's husband went up to the town hall and spoke to somebody there, and it's like, when we come up there, it's like, stuff goes out one year and out the other, and nobody never does anything about it, or we don't never even get a common courtesy call back to let us know what's going to be done about it. So right now, we got like four signs wrong on our block, and then about a year ago, I came before y'all about what they're on Collins and Green. We got a one-way sign that's pointing one way when it should be pointing into the driveway or the school. And I mean, a year? You would think somebody would go out there and get these signs corrected. It's just that, like I said, we're just afraid of emergency situation. And then, like I say, it's just, it's just a problem, but it just seems like if we go for anything, we, all we need is just, we'd just like to have some follow-up on if it's a problem with the public works or something. Just pick up the phone. If you can't do nothing, say we're working on it, we can't handle it, but at least don't let us sit like it's going out one year and out the other, because that's what we're all starting to feel like.
Thank you, James. We'll try to do better with that.
When did we hear?
Next.
Mayor.
Yes.
Before we go any further, he's, from, for medical issues, medical reasons, he's, he's stated a very, very important item here, and I would like for us to, I would like for you to, to address our town manager, and we need a response back within the next week.
Larry, I can let you and the council and everybody know, those signs have been ordered. When he came to me with that concern a week or two ago, put a work order in immediately for that, and Lee checked the inventory of signs. I don't know how they got changed from east to west, but he is true, he is correct. They do say West Green on them. Since I've been here, they haven't been replaced. And Lee, I don't know if you recall if the guys replaced them or not, but we have new ones ordered, and as soon as they come, they're going to be put up.
Okay, so we're waiting for the signs to come here?
Yes, apparently so.
Thank you.
At this time, Beth Matthews.
Do I need to state my address?
Please.
Beth Matthews at 601 Santibel Drive, Nashville. I don't know Mr. Lee, but I think he hit on a great point in terms of communication. I think that that is the reason why, again, you're seeing the people here tonight. I've said this in a previous meeting, it started out that I came here interested in finding out more about the situation with the Nashville Junction. And my interest has peaked within our community, whether it be with about the trees, our sewer, everything. I mean, the things that you read in the paper, and, you know, there was a point when the residents on Body Street were not notified that they were going to be living on a one-way street. And now, you find out that there are residents, that it was approved, I mean, in a prior meeting nine months ago about a sewer bill, or water bill, and now we're going to get charged double for that. And so, where's the follow-up? That's what it is. This is a lack of communication, and we have appointed people to oversee this. And I, it started out with me being, again, me being interested in the Nashville Junction because it affects my family personally, but I am livid at the lack of communication that's going on. This is a tight-knit community, or it should be, or I thought it was. And I am very disappointed in how people are reacting to certain things, and so I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
And I hope the communication gets better.
Thank you.
And I'm going to say one more thing. When you reach out to the town and ask for information, even attorney asks for information, and you don't get a response back, I think that speaks volume. The residents aren't getting heard back, and attorney's not getting heard back, so we're, who's responsible for this? I mean, I don't know. It's very, very frustrating. Thank you.
Next is Al Hyde.
Al Hyde, 117 West Washington Street, here in Nashville. I was going to talk about the trees, but before I do that, I am going to say something that I find a little odd, and that is, in the agenda, the budget is pushed all the way to the end. I wonder why? Could it be that perhaps everyone will be so tired in the next hour and a half that you think we won't want to ask questions? Anyway, I am going to speak about the trees. I talked with a forester today from Arcola, someone that I know that has thousands of acres of trees, and they said that rather than hire someone to come, that you could call the Nash County Extension Agency and get someone from Raleigh to come, and it would not cost us anything. And he's willing to tell me how to do all this, but the call was facilitated late in the afternoon, so I really didn't have time to get into all of that. But I just want you to know that it can be done in a more cost-efficient way. And I'll just, I'll just re-echo what, what Beth just said. I do think communication is dismal, abysmal. It's really bad. And we're having two rate increases because someone didn't do their job. The town council, you did your job. You, you approved a budget, so you did what you were supposed to do. Someone in the town office did not follow through, so that does not make it your fault. That, the buck stops as far as I'm concerned with our town manager and the finance director, neither of which seem to be held accountable for their actions. It's time that we have accountability.
Thank you. Next, Doretha Johnson.
Can we just address real quick? There was something that Al brought up regarding the trees, and I believe Coy already went that avenue, but they were told that once you get a certified arborist, which is-
There's Coy. Coy, tell us-
Who they recommend for high-risk situations, that you trust the arborist.
Good evening. I did reach out to Matthew Stevens with the Nash County Co-op Extension. He said whenever there is risk involved, that they refer that to a certified arborist. After the meeting on Tuesday, I did reach back out to him to see who they refer those to. He gave me a list to the ISA, which is the International Society of Arbiculture, their website that gives you a list of certified arborists in your area, and you can do a search. He didn't give me anybody from Co-op Extension that was willing to do that for free, but he did give me a list of certified arborists to reach out to, and I did reach out to some on that list.
We'll talk about that later. Thank you. Doretha Johnson.
I'm Doretha Johnson, 110 East Washington Street. I think I was going to reserve what I was going to ask about the trees until, is there something being presented tonight?
Yes.
About the trees, so I can have questions afterwards, so I'll reserve that time.
Yes, absolutely.
But I do wanted to know, is there a list or something that we can have for when trash is picked up and how it, you know, when there's a holiday, when it's picked up? And also during the week, if there are limbs and trees that stay out for a week or week and a half, two weeks before you have to call to find out when it's going to be picked up? It looks terrible on Main Street like that, just, and I just keep bringing them out. I have a lot of trees, I keep hauling stuff out, and they just get picked up whenever. So, communication, it's not that we, when we put it out, it's just, if we know when to put it out, I think we'll reserve and keep it in the back until we do. But when we think it's going to be picked up, on a Friday, it used to be picked up, and then now, I don't know when it's picked up. It's just, just all rolling out there.
We'll make sure you, we'll let you know, but I will say that the truck that picks up all of our debris out by the street is, is broken. Am I correct? It is being fixed, it's having some problems right now.
That is, that's crazy. I mean, can we get another truck?
Well, we don't have another truck, but we were talking about today, if they can't fix it pretty soon, we're going to borrow one from another town.
Yeah.
So it'll get picked up.
Because otherwise, if we keep waiting, it's just going to keep piling and piling. And that's something that we didn't know.
Right.
If we knew that, we wouldn't put it outside either. So, thank you.
Thank you.
When are things like old carpets and furniture picked up on the street? Lee, can you address that?
Bulk trash is picked up on Fridays.
Okay.
So if it doesn't fit in the trash can, it's considered bulk, and it's picked up on Fridays until the holiday, the trash schedule shifts. So there'll be no bulk pickup this Friday, because we'll be, we'll be picking up the day of the trash drive, the day behind.
Okay, last Friday, was it picked up?
No.
I don't think so.
It was broken.
No, I'm talking about things like carpet, you know, and-
Well, we pick, we pick up first what's scheduled, and then, of course, you know, we talked months ago about just driving the town, looking for things, which is inefficient, but we do the best we can with the time allowed after everybody's, that's been scheduled and called ahead, it's been taken care of.
So those who call and state they have a bulk pickup will be picked up on Fridays? Otherwise, the town has to be notified or has to drive around and find out where the bulk items are?
Correct. If someone calls ahead for a bulk pickup, we'll pick up everything that's scheduled first, and then the guys will just pick the street and start driving and looking. There's no other good way to do it.
Is all of this information available on the website as far as dates and times?
I believe so. If the schedule changes, Sarah updates the calendar for trash pickup over around holidays.
Okay.
Do you anticipate when the truck will be repaired? Will it get it back?
They were waiting for parts, right? That is my understanding.
Yeah, and Kevin put in the parts delay last week, so.
So Kevin's going to repair it?
Yeah.
Once it gets departed?
Yeah. And realize this is probably a week or two.
A week or two?
Yeah.
So we'll have to make arrangements with Zebulon to borrow one of their trucks like we did last time.
Okay.
Next on our item, our agenda is a special presentation, which I love. So I'd like to ask Hayden Calhoun to come to the front. And oh my goodness, he looks just like his father did it that evening. Feels like deja vu.
Yeah. Want to go down front with him?
I will.
For pictures and stuff?
He does look like he's dead.
Well, I'd like to thank the town for letting me do this project.
Thank you.
And I hope it benefits the town.
Definitely.
It is beautiful. I went out and sat, and it is just so serene and peaceful, and I just thank you so much. But I'd like to read this. Hayden Calhoun is a Nashville Eagle Scout. He's completed his Eagle Scout project at the Forest Hill Cemetery, a prayer garden that overlooks the cemetery pond. Hayden organized and held several fundraisers with his fellow scouts to raise the needed funds. With these funds, he purchased and installed two benches, a bird bath, landscaping blocks, and butterfly bushes to complete the prayer garden. Through this Eagle Scout project, Hayden has demonstrated initiative, determination, dedication, and appreciation to his scout troop and community. The council is proud to recognize him right now at this meeting as an outstanding citizen as well as an outstanding Eagle Scout, and we appreciate your project. Do you have the picture of his-
Yes, it's been floating.
I wanted to show that. And you need to just go out there, it's so peaceful, but I'd like you to pass this around and just see what he did. And thank you so much. And- Next on our agenda is to move on with the old business, and the first old business is the Wendy, Wendy Oak Drainage Improvement Project.
Did you want to move the budget public hearing up?
I thought I was going to hear a motion.
I'd like to move that we move the budget to the forefront and discuss that before we do anything else.
Is there-
The budget is the last thing on the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. So move over to number nine on the budget. Before we start with this budget, I'd like to say that the council has worked diligently and have put much time, energy, thought into this budget. Two days were spent going through the budget, line item by line item. If council members had concerns or questions, they were discussed at this time. At the end of our second day, the council agreed on our 2021-22 budget. I personally want to thank the council publicly for the job they did. They were very professional during this time, asking questions. So now, we are presenting the budget to you and giving you an opportunity to, we're giving you an opportunity so that we can receive your input.
Mayor and council, at this time, I'd like to give the audience and the council a brief summary on this proposed budget. This annual operating budget, it totals 408,258 dollars, and it supports the town council's goals for economic development, maintaining essential infrastructure, organizational excellence, enhancing parks and recreation, and building upon the town's reputation of being a welcoming community. This budget appropriates $565,688 in general fund balance. Included in the budget are funds for the acquisition of land for construction of Fire Station 2, increased funds to address derelict abandoned properties within the town, funds to provide for recreation and planning program, programming a zip line in Glover Park, an aggressive plan for addressing the town's aging water and sewer, streets and sidewalk infrastructure, increases in public safety salaries, municipal service district funds for the decorative street lighting along Farm Street, a downtown facade improvement mini-grant, and downtown two-hour parking enforcement, and funds to construct the Nashville Junction parking lot in green space. The property tax rate for this budget remains at 58 cents per hundred, taking into consideration the revenue projections, the town was not able to fund a number of things. There was a request for five additional police officers to help keep our town safe and the equipment that goes along with them, three additional firefighters and equipment. There was also a request that wasn't funded to afford a second high-water rescue vehicle. The FY '22 fee schedule includes increases in water and sewer base fees and rates, and increases sanitation fees. These fee increases are necessary to maintain long-term financial solvency and the level of service that Nashville residents are accustomed to. This budget is a 4% increase over the amended current year budget and a 15% increase over the original current year budget.
Okay. Are there any questions or input from the council?
I am interested in finding that, because we are appropriating $565,688 dollars from the fund balance. I'd just like to know what specifically that is.
That's an appropriation in fund balance because your revenues are not sufficient to cover your expenses. Your expenses are higher than your revenues, so you balance the budget with fund balance.
Okay, I think last year, we appropriated, I think, $73,000. This is a huge increase.
It varies from year to year. The reason that local government budgeting uses the appropriated fund balance item is, line item, is because we have to by North Carolina law, have a balanced budget. And when you're projecting revenues, you're always going to project those at a conservative rate, lower than what you would anticipate, in addition to the fact that North Carolina law requires that our property taxes only be budgeted at the prior year's collection rate, which was 98%. So you've already estimated your revenues on the conservative side, lower than you will actually realize. At the same time, you're going to budget your expenditure appropriations at some level, at which you will not receive or go to that level when you're operating. So what you end up with is a variance between those two, which typically is going to leave local governments in the black. And if you look at page 116 in your budget book, not your agenda, it shows what the general fund balance, appropriated fund balance was. For the current year, it was $417,328. $113,000 will be to the good. We will not spend, but in essence, have revenues or expenditures of that amount. In the prior year, 2020, there were certain one-time expenditures that were made, that was the reason for the use of $122,000 in fund balance. One-time use of fund balance is a very applicable and appropriate thing to do. And then, the last time that we had actually used fund balance was in the year 2017, when the town council opted to pay off all of its debt exceeding a million dollars. So that was the reason we had an operating loss effectively for that year. I have no problem with the amount of money that's being budgeted for appropriated fund balance. I understand this year, it appears that we're going to operate in the black. I have all ideas that we will do the same for next year, and I don't see a problem with it.
Any other questions?
I was wondering, are salaries included in this appropriation?
As a part of expenses, yes.
Okay.
As I said, the fund balance appropriation is as a result of revenues not being sufficient to cover expenses. Your expenses are exceeding your revenues by that amount, so you use fund balance to balance the budget.
Okay, salaries are a reoccurring thing, so.
It's not specifically salaries or any expense. You can look at it that it's applicable to one-time expenditures, and you can't say that it's attributable to any expenditure within the budget. The town is going to operate paying their employees and doing the services that we need to do, but we are not saying that an appropriation of fund balance is taking place. It is there in order for us to comply with North Carolina law that requires a balanced budget. But I, I know that the staff's obligation, and I'm sure that their responsibility that they intend to uphold is that they will not use that fund balance for any purpose outside of what the council approves. And in approving the budget, we're saying that those one-time expenditures are appropriate to use fund balance for.
And I'm just saying, that's a very large appropriation to start out with. You know, during the year, we make many amendments that add up, and we have to go into fund balance, but this is, you know, a large amount to start off the year.
It is a large amount, but I, but I'm, I hope that as we've done in prior years, that we will not use this in our appropriations. There'll be money going back into fund balance rather than using it.
In 2017, $1.3 million was appropriated, and 2018, $745,000 was appropriated, and 2020, $588,000 was appropriated. So it's not out of line with what the town has done previously.
But I think in the chart, it indicated that our fund balance is going down significantly every year, and that's something we have to be very careful about because we use some, that fund balance, we have to keep in mind that should we have a catastrophe, we would have to keep our government operational for six months, paying all of our employees. And so, that fund balance is very, very important to maintain at a high level.
Any other questions or input from the council?
Well, I wasn't able to make the budget sessions, and so I thank all of you for all of your hard work in this. I do have one concern. I got updates from Sam and Randy after each one, and that is just the farmer's market. And I, I understand where the mentality was coming of the potential of it not beginning operations until the end of our fiscal year, so why budget the funds? However, in discussions that I've had with Randy, with Coy, with Michael Hurd, it does appear that we can be fully operational by April with pop-up events occurring over Christmas and Thanksgiving. So I was hoping to take half of what we were thinking was going to be expended for the year, which would be the $60,000, and put $30,000 in the budget for the farmer's market, since it looks like we will be operating for six months out of it.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
There's a second? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Motion carries. Motion carries. All right, any other discussion on any items on the budget?
I have a question about miscellaneous revenues. $131,000.
What page are you on?
That's on the budget page. 13.
Okay, gotcha. You have a question about what now?
Miscellaneous revenue, $131,000. I just wondered what that was.
It's just various revenues that don't fit into any other category.
For example?
Reimbursements for prior year expenses, insurance proceeds, things of that nature.
Any other questions concerning the budget?
The enterprise fund, the fees, on page 323.
What is your question?
Okay, the five-inch meter is up. We're going from $1361 to $19.
Five-inch meter?
Five-eighths.
That's five-eighths.
Yeah, this is what we discussed, isn't it, at our, when we were meeting?
But that's up $5.39, correct? And all meter sizes from 418 to 450, that's an additional 32 cents, correct? And in-town sewer. Okay, we just passed an amendment, what, last week, correcting the $1391 that should have been $2344, right? And our new rate is 29. So everyone should understand we've gone from $13.91 to $29. That's an increase of $15.09, correct?
So last year, that rate actually decreased from $23.44 to $13.
It never moved. In other words, that was the number that we did not correct.
It decreased, and effectively decreased. So the previous budget amendment at the last meeting brought the rate back to what it was supposed to be.
Okay, so there was a difference of $5.56 or whatever. Anyway, from $1391 to 29, it's a 15. And that's what people are going to see on their bills, that increase. And then all meters for in-town sewer goes from $953 to $13. That's an increase of $3.47. So, and then sanitation and recyclables, that was an increase of $1.87. That's on page 325. So a total of, what is it, $26.14 that people will see on their water bill as a result of these increases. And that's just for the first thousand. But everyone needs to be made aware of that. $26.14, that's an addition, you know, and if you use three or four thousand gallons, that's more.
Can either Randy or Sam just give a brief discussion about how we've been operating at a loss because our fees have been too low? And what would happen if we do not increase our water sewer fees?
Yeah. In the budget book that we had in the review during the work sessions, Sam did a wonderful job of showing revenues and costs for our enterprise fund. And she had it charted out there, and you can clearly see that since 2014, 2015, the town's water and sewer rates haven't generated enough money to cover the expenses on a regular basis. Five of those seven years, we ended up not having enough, so we had to use the reserves in the enterprise fund. So you can get by that way with a while and cover those for that odd year that comes around every now and then. I think five out of the seven years, it is a trend. Our water and sewer rates are not high enough to cover our expenses. And then we had an extraordinary year like we've had this year. I mean, we had the wettest year on record for North Carolina, eastern North Carolina. We have an old system that's got a lot of leaks in it. We were sending to Rocky Mount 30% more wastewater than what we were selling to our customers. And when that situation hit, two things, the amount of money we had to pay for processing all that water went up, and then we have sewer surcharges, which are the contaminants within the sewer itself, COD, BOD, total suspended salamine, ammonium nitrates. Those are computed based upon a sample that they pull on quarterly basis and multiplied by the gallons that we send them. Because that usage was so high, it really amplified that. We ended up spending over $600,000 in sewer surcharges in this fiscal year, and we only budgeted like 400. So there was a $200,000 unexpected. I mean, nobody anticipated that, or we would have had that in there. Anyway, where I'm going with all this, on a long-term trend, our water and sewer, which is an enterprise operation, has to be self-supported. It's not right, it's not appropriate, it's not best practice to use general fund revenues to supplement the water and sewer rates. I realize, as everybody in the council, when we went through the work session, this is a steep increase. It truly is. It truly is. We would have been far better to increase a little bit over the last seven years, so we didn't have to put in the size of an increase. But it's unavoidable at this point. If we don't do it, we're going to become insolvent. And we know in North Carolina, when enterprise owns, when enterprise funds become insolvent, the local government's commission takes them over, and they come in and they set the rates for water and sewer at what they have to be to cover the expenses. No amount of protesting is going to make that change. They're simply doing it based upon the facts. And, you know, that's the situation we find ourselves in now. We have to increase these rates. I can't think of any other options. I'm certainly open to any and all, but the bottom line is, this enterprise fund has to be self-supporting and self-sufficient.
And Randy, you may want to add, too, as part of this budget, part of this budget amendment or increase over past years is to try to correct the problem that we have with infrastructure, with the water we're sending to Rocky Mount, being charged for enormous amounts of volumes going on there. We're trying to get a handle on that, and that costs money to research that and find out. You have to have facts that you can present to Rocky Mount to debunk their accounting. And it's just the cost of doing business.
And fortunately for us is we have the American Recovery Funds, you know, which last we heard, Nashville was slated to receive $1,630,000. And it's the council that's intent with this budget to spend almost all of that on upgrades to our water and sewer system. So that the deferred maintenance that hasn't happened in years past, we can get caught up on. And we're going to start that with an inventory assessment. That's where we hire a consultant to come in and actually take a look at all of our underground infrastructure and assess it, and help us put together a capital improvement plan for repairing that within a specific amount of time, in most cases 10 years, and give us a true idea of what that cost will likely be. So we can budget responsibly for it, and we can make that happen. This plan also contains an eight-step plan for getting our water and sewer system back to the solvent state. One part of that is a rate increase, another part is the inventory asset, another part of that is televising the sanitary sewer collection throughout town to find out who the leaks are and fix them and get it tightened, buttoned up. Another part of that strategy is to talk with Rocky Mount, who is the recipient of our sewage, and see if we can have some agreement that when we get those heavy rain events, which we're not going to be able to eliminate right out of the, right off the bat, it's going to take some time to do that, that they would work with us on that. And because 30%, what we're sending is clear water, maybe they could see fit not to put the sewer surcharges on that 30% increase because we're not actually sending them any more mass of pollutants. It's just a greater volume of water. So those are part of, part of the strategies for fixing that.
Randy, there were several things that happened this year that kind of brought things to a head. We had a budget amendment of $1.5 million, I think, about a month ago, which pretty much depleted our enterprise fund balance. If you would address that, the things that actually happened that caused this depletion.
It's on page 77.
So it starts, I mean, like I said, we hit the perfect storm this year. We wiped out an entire enterprise fund of nearly a million dollars in one year, you know, which goes back to councilmember Sam's statement that reserve funds are very important to have. The sewer treatment fees that we paid to the city of Rocky Mount were 30% higher than the previous fiscal year. The sewer surcharges were 60% higher. The town's largest water and sewer customer, CP, discontinued operation in December in the process of restructuring the rates last year to try and put, so that the water rate, which included the first 100 gallons of usage, the sewer rate would near that, and also include the first 1,000 gallons of sewage. It was the intent that our ordinance have that increase from $13 to 2344. Unfortunately, that change didn't make it in the ordinance that the council passed, so it didn't get put into the utility billing program, and we haven't used that rate. We filled out the old rate of $13.50 some cents for the last 10 months. And that was corrected, as was stated earlier, with an amendment. If that would have been in place, everybody would have been paying $9.50 some cents more a month for sewer than they have the last nine months. Again, that was one of them. Our water and sewer department has done a fantastic job of catching up on replacing water meters and water meter registers, changed out over 1,300 meters in-town this last year. A number of those were faulty, and we couldn't get readings from them anymore. And, you know, in any system of any size, when that happens, you simply do your best. You estimate the bill based upon past statistics that you do have records for. So now we're able to get actual readings. The town's largest producing well, well number six, went down last October. We're still fighting to get that back online. We put in a new pump of $22,000, and now it's got a problem that it's pulling up air with the water. And air in the system is not a good thing. It makes pipes pop and toilets slurp, and so we're trying to get that taken care of. We had three lift stations that had pumps that cracked out on us. $8,500 a pump, that's $26,000. And then in the fiscal year FY20, the Water and Sewer Fund still owed $1.2 million in pledged contributions to capital projects that were completed in FY2017. And the Water and Sewer Fund paid those contributions in the fiscal year of 2020, which gave a false sense of fund balance. It should have been zeroed out and taken care of back in 2017. It never was. When Sam found it, she brought it to the council, and the council agreed we need to get this corrected.
And Randy, that needs to be noted as an accounting error. Is that right?
Yes.
Everybody needs to be aware of that.
Our auditor didn't catch it, did bring it to our attention?
From 2017. This staff was not in place then.
I would also like to add that the Water and Sewer Fund experienced an 8% decrease in both residential and commercial water and sewer usage as compared to the same pre-pandemic timeframe. It was due to COVID. And I would also like to note and point out that the Water and Sewer Fund has been operating on a deficit since 2013.
Randy, the items that you just went over, and we, of course, went over in our budget work sessions, it was about two or three pages, and we spoke about trying to get this out to the public, to all the citizens. Is that still part of the plan to help? Basically, it's what you just explained, the problems, and then our proposed solutions to the problems.
It is. The fee schedule that's proposed in this will go into effect with the August billing.
July.
July billing. So it's our intent, we're going to send every water and sewer user a letter explaining what I just talked about here and explaining what you guys know, having gone through your budget work sessions, May 11th, and May 25th. And it is a tough, little small. I admit, I agree. I'm going to endure it, along with everybody else in town. But I, unless you guys can come up with another solution, this is what we're recommending that the council do.
Can I just ask that in that explanation also be the rate increase that just took effect this month, which was the correction of the old one? I've already gotten just one email on that, that there should have been like a flyer or something that came with it to let people know.
We did send a small notification on the bills.
On the card?
Yes. And I do also want to bring up once again, I did provide council with this information during the last meeting. It's a history of water and sewer sanitation fees. I went back all the way to 2007. If you look at that document between 2007 and 2015, all the rates remained largely flat. Five of eight of those years, there were no increases in anything. In the other, there was a 1% increase, and then the other two years, there were 3%. So it was a largely flat rates for eight years. And 2016 was the only year in which we had a large increase, and that was as a result of the city of Rocky Mount raising their rates. So we just raised our rates only to member their increase. We didn't raise our rates to shore up the rates as they should have been. And then the rates, once again, remained largely flat until last year, when we raised the sanitation fee to cover costs in that area. So if you just, once again, just to reiterate, since 2007, between 2007 and current year, the rates had remained largely flat.
And Sam, is it not true that you proposed a rate increase last year for this budget? But because of the fact that we were entering a pandemic, council opted to not do that at that time, and we went with the minimal rate?
Yes, we backed off.
But there was a rate increase.
There was a very small rate increase in the water side, however, there was an unintentional rate decrease on the sewer side. So overall, it was an effective decrease in the amount of $7 and some change.
Any other questions from the council?
Mayor, by many, since it was brought up about the air and sewer, I guess I wanted to give everybody an explanation once again. I know the newspaper mentioned it in last week's paper of the mishap, I think is how it was termed. But last year, the council agreed to change the sewer base fee in the FY21 budget from $13.91 by $9.53 add to that. That is the cost of the first 1,000 gallons of sewer usage. That added to it would have brought the sewer base fee to 2344 a month. Again, this was done to match or mirror the water base fee, which already included the first 1,000 gallons. And when people have questions with the bill, the staff and I will often have to explain, well, you get the first 1,000 with your water, but you don't with the sewer, and you'll always get this puzzled reaction. So this was an attempt to take care of that. Unfortunately, that change to 2344 did not make it into the budget ordinance, which most of you, I believe, probably have in your hands tonight, the budget ordinance that's proposed. Last year's budget ordinance, that $13.91 should have been 2344. It wasn't caught by the staff at the time, it wasn't caught by myself at the time, it wasn't caught by the council at the time. Everybody reviewed that, and it didn't stand out to anybody. So in preparation for this year's budget, the FY22 budget, Sam discovered that, that for the previous, at that time, 10 months, we've been charging only $13.91 a month, when it should have been 2344. Everybody in town basically got a $9.53 deduction in what they were paying over previously. You know, prior to that, prior to this, everybody was paying that. You paid the $13.91 for your base fee, and then you paid another $9.53 for the first 1,000 gallons. Last 10 months, that hasn't happened. The air was discovered approximately five weeks ago, as I mentioned, as the town staff was putting the budget together for tonight. As town manager, that air lies with me. I apologize for it. It was unintentional. Nobody sat out to make that mistake, and the council has since corrected that at its May 25th council meeting with the passage of a resolution that put the base fee to 2344.
Any other questions?
How much did that air amount to in loss of revenue for the enterprise fund?
As best we can tell, it amounted to, we left $21,900 unbilled on the table. As best we can tell, it amounted to, we left twenty-one thousand nine hundred dollars unbilled on the table. And over ten months, it is two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars.
Related to the water sewer rates, I believe that the town has a fiduciary responsibility to implement these rates so that we can move towards getting our enterprise fund in a solvent position. If we fail to do this, then it is on us as elected officials because we haven't done what is necessary to make sure that the water sewer fund can operate in the black and not in the red. And so, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the two thousand twenty-one twenty-two.
You still need to open the call?
I am. We're going to do that. All right, are there any other questions from the council? If you're a citizen and you would like to speak, you have three minutes to speak. Since you didn't sign up, just raise your hand if you have something to say and come up. And again, you have to give your name and where you live.
Al Hyde, one seventeen West Washington Street. As someone that works at figures every day and reviews portfolios and that, it's hard for me to understand how someone that has computer software in front of them and does billing cannot find that there's a billing mistake until ten months have passed. And if you don't like to be questioned about that, that's not really my problem.
Oh, excuse me, excuse me.
You're not to attack anyone.
You're not to.
I'm attacking.
You can't threaten the staff individually.
No.
I have a call to make.
Well, we know exactly.
I have a call to make a name.
Mr. Hyde.
Mrs. Burns.
Now, we really cannot call names or infer to anybody, just tell us.
I'm just stating that that is truly irresponsible. Ten months, almost three hundred thousand dollars uncollected, or whatever you said, two hundred and, what was it, two eighty-five?
Two nineteen.
Two nineteen. That were in the hole because either someone didn't look at the computer? I mean, there's no rationale behind that. You all did your job.
Well, we're responsible too. We approved everything. And, you know, it's sort of like ye without sin cast the first stone. We made a mistake. And we can't change the mistake. Just like in our lives, we can't change a mistake. But we've got to move forward for this town to exist, to prosper, and some wonderful things to come here that are in the making.
I realize that, but I want to make the point that it was definitely.
And we understand that, Al.
But, yeah.
Thank you.
I'm not saying that the rate doesn't need to occur at that.
I know, I understand, Al, I really do.
But it's unfortunate that.
It is, it's very unfortunate.
I can afford to pay it, but a lot of people can't.
Right, and we understand.
Beth?
Beth Matthews, one oh six Santa Bell Drive. One of the things that I was going to say was something that Al just said, that there's a lot of families that can't actually accommodate that additional twenty-six fourteen a month into their budget. I mean, we're just getting out of COVID. There's a lot of people who are not back to work. Maybe that does afford some people that twenty-six fourteen, but whatever, they need to go back to work. It was noted that we, that there was one, that we should be getting 1.3 million of the recovery fund. And it was mentioned that the majority of that would be spent on the infrastructure. I would think that the citizens would want to see all of that 1.3 million spent on the infrastructure, considering that's what it pertains to. If you're looking at two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars that's lost over the last nine months, but yet you're willing to give two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for a parking lot for the Nashville Junction. I think somebody needs a calculator.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak?
And if I may, let me add another line to the 1.3 million that we're supposed to be getting from the government. Well, we've learned that since we were notified that we would get 1.3 million, we've also learned that they did not include all the cities that were eligible to receive it. So out of that big fund that we are getting a part of, they've got to go back in and include some more cities that was not included at the very beginning. So our 1.3 still may not be materialized or coming to us. So we budgeted for that, but there's a chance that that 1.3 will not come to us.
We didn't budget the whole 1.3, did we?
So we need to tell them to hear real numbers. We need to hear real numbers about what we're paying and what we have elected people to do.
But the 1.3 is the numbers that was given to us. We have not had a new number come back to us yet.
It's 1.6.
1.6.
1.6, right, 1.6. But the new number from the government has not come to us yet, so we don't know.
Which is unfortunate that it happens to be after the budget approval process, but we can't rush that.
So it means that you don't spend two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars on a parking lot when you've lost two hundred and nineteen on a water lot.
Anybody else like to speak? Okay, Mayor John.
I just want to ask a question about the farmers market. My name is Mayor John Matthews, I live at two oh five West Cross Street. And you all have heard from me before, and so I won't restate what my position is. My question is, on the farmers market, that's the two hundred and seventy-five thousand that's been allocated, is that just for the parking lot? Or does that include anything else besides the parking lot?
I believe that's the, sorry.
Do you want to address that, Randy? Or do you have the exact numbers on that, Sam?
Well, we just put in, we just appropriated 270,000. And at this time, it's for the parking lot and green space, which no decision has been made at this time.
And my understanding is there has been no consensus on what money is spent for what?
I think that's right. We agreed on this in our work session, I thought, when we were together with the council. I didn't hear, I mean.
We never determined how much was going to be spent on that parking lot.
Well, it just says farmers market, 275,000.
That should say parking lot and green space with the stage.
Instead of farmers market.
Right.
Yeah, it's not for the farmers market.
It's not for the farmers market, no.
So what is it for?
The parking lot.
So the parking lot, the green space, and the stage rentals.
It doesn't include the music venue.
It includes, I think, renting temporary stages for when events occur.
Yes.
But we haven't determined how much we're going to be spending on the farmers market, right?
No.
True. One of the things that was discussed is that the town has the authority to go back to our engineer and they will do whatever the council instructs them to do related to that parking lot. When those estimates, whenever they may be, come forward, we will have an amount. This is to establish a budget for the purpose of moving forward and saying that the town is committed to this project. It doesn't mean that we're going to spend the whole 275,000. Is that accurate?
So in essence, it's all in flux right now.
As is everything in this budget.
Right.
So it means that everything else that has been talked about at the Nashville Junction is more or less on hold right now.
No, Mr. Hurd is moving forward with his portion of it, which is the 1.4 million dollar outfit of the building. So the building will not be destroyed, it will be preserved.
Yes.
We are moving forward with going with the parking lot and the grassy area and a rental of a temporary stage, as well as half of a year's operation of the farmers market.
And that's the 275,000 that's allocated right in this budget?
The 270 with the 30 that I just amended to put in, 30 for the farmers market for the six months.
But we haven't agreed on 1,700 dollars a month leasing.
No, we haven't signed any lease agreements, we haven't done anything. This is just our best estimate of what it would cost to do it for six months and move forward with then signing lease agreements and things like that.
Okay, and once again, I would just like to say, I would like for you all to recall what I said at the last meeting about the location of the stage. We have presented a couple of drawings to Mr. Hurd and his attorneys since then, which they have denied or have not decided that it was in my best interest or Ms. Guthan's best interest to move the amphitheater. So, but you know what my position is. I feel like that my neighbor and myself, we're both, I'm almost 80 and she's well into her 80s, and I think we deserve to maintain the lifestyle that we have had there for the last, I believe, that 36 years. She's lived that 50. And I just don't think that our lifestyle and the way we live should be uprooted at this particular time in our lives. There could be some compromise between the parties that are involved instead of people kind of disregarding our requests for different information that they do not provide for us. And so I won't appear before you anymore and say anything else about it. I'm just leaving it to you individually and I hope you will each search your heart and that however you feel about it, I will accept it.
Ms. Matthews, does the town have any, have any copies of those drawings that you submitted to Mr. Hurd? Does the town have those?
Yes.
Yes.
We do?
They do, yes. They have, for a whole week.
Yeah.
Okay.
They've known about it way longer than that and no one's ever responded to us.
I'm in communication with their attorney.
Yeah, Mr. Edwards has been in touch with our attorney and he, yeah, he did say that Mr. Hurd didn't think it was in my best interest for the stage to be moved, that he thought the way it was and where it was located, it was the best, the sound would go the right direction and not right toward the house. So that was our last information today. And Mark has been in touch with our attorney and.
And if you have any piece of information you need from the town, just tell your attorney to call or email me and we'll get it to you as fast as possible.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other input from the citizens?
I'd kind of like to know about.
You need to come up and give your name.
Barbara Shan, 100 East Green Street. I'm not fully understanding what the farmers market is. Is it going to be like in Raleigh where you have a huge building and the grounds and people come and sell their fruits and vegetables? That's what it is?
Not the extent of Raleigh. If you look over in like Rocky Mount where they have their farmers market, it will be something a little bit lower scale than that. So the sheds that are out there currently would be redone with pavement laid and vendors, local farmers, would come and sell their produce locally here.
Okay, then, and this is, I may be off the chart, but why is it important to have a parking lot? Why can't they park on the grass or somewhere and we get that money?
It's not just for the farmers market, though. That parking lot is for the 15 retail spaces that are going to go into the renovated historic building, the lumber, the old lumber building that's there. That's going to be renovated and turned into several different restaurant-type things, shops, office space, places where people can go and make purchases.
I get it, but where is it going to be?
In the building.
The old building supply?
The old building supply building is being completely redone.
That's close to me.
That's, Mr. Hurd is putting in 1.4 million dollars to redo that building and make it, you know, its former glory and then some.
Okay, well, you take that building and now you're going to get an influx of people down our street.
Which street are you on?
100 East Green, in the building supply right over there, by the railroad tracks.
Right.
That's going to cause another traffic problem. We already got a traffic problem.
We have, we have a population problem. Where our 40 and under population is decreasing. We are unable to attract young families and young professionals. And so we are trying to do things here in Nashville to attract young families and young, young business people. And this is something that has been discussed in several steering committee meetings. It's been something that's discussed with our Downtown Strong Committee. It's things that have been brought up as possibilities of things that citizens have said that they would love to see. And we anticipate that people who we want to become citizens would love to see.
I'd like to see a riding rink, but we don't have one. I'm just saying that I think that, will it just be open Friday, Saturday, Sunday?
Well, the, the building with the 15 retail spaces will be open during the week at whatever time the retailers decide is beneficial for them. There'll be an upscale hairdresser in there, for example. There'll be all sorts of different things that you could do or get there. And then as far as the farmers market, I think the intent is to have it operate on Friday evenings or afternoons and then Saturday, like a one to five.
Why not take that money, put it toward the sewer, get us out of the hole with Rocky Mount and then move forward?
And then what do we do about our sustainability issue with not having people coming in who are 40 and under with families? We're trying to do this as a global.
You mark my words, they are coming. We have a growth that is coming this way because Raleigh can't sustain what is being built on now. It's coming, it's already in Knightdale, it's in Wendell, it's all around us.
This is per recommendations of professional that we've hired to do our master plan, people that have come in that have worked statewide. This is not just something that I feel needs to happen. This is based on professional recommendations and it's based on what our citizens have told us.
Right, I understand that. But the other thing is the schools, they are very low rated.
Mm-hmm, they are.
And the school is what brings the people in with the families.
The schools are going to be a problem all across North Carolina.
No, the schools are a problem here.
My brother is facing the same issue in Wick Forest. Believe me, the schools are an issue across North Carolina.
Well, I think it's a shame because I think that's money that's going to be down the rabbit hole. I'm sorry.
Okay, time's up, thank you. Any other input?
I have heard, and I have heard, and I have heard that we don't have young people coming. We have someone on the council probably my age, something got them here. We have young people on Washington Street, we have young people all around Nashville. There are people on this council that want this to occur. And I do agree that the money that we have lost in revenue, I mean, it doesn't need to be going into this project. Obviously, you want it.
It's a one-time expenditure for something that could be such a massive benefit for our town.
That's your opinion.
And it's the opinion of hundreds of other people.
Where are they? They haven't been here to support your argument, Mrs. Burns.
Not today, right now, no.
Since I've been here.
If you would like me to have them lined, many of them are on the board that you're on for Downtown Strong. Talk to some of those.
Yes, I've been to that board, all the meetings that I've been to, we have very little input. I mean, we have, you know yourself, the attendance that we have. No, it's a handful that want it, you're one of them. You're pushing your agenda down our front.
Okay, let's move on.
Point of order.
And I'm calling you out on it.
Please do.
Yeah, you got here.
Okay, let's be courteous and polite. And there's something we need to keep in mind as citizens. We've got to get things here that produce money, revenue, so we won't have to tax everybody. And you cannot do it if you don't make some changes. You know, you've got to do some things to bring in the revenue. And I'll have to tell you, we've got some great possibilities coming here. Randy and I have been in meetings all day and there are some great possibilities to help this town grow and become, have more revenue coming in. And we're never going to please everybody. We have to do what we feel in our hearts is right, listen to you, and then put it all in the package and decide what is best for this town. Any other discussion? If not, do I hear a motion concerning our budget?
Mayor, I make the motion that we approve the two thousand twenty-one twenty-two budget as corrected with the addition that Ms. Burns made earlier.
Do I hear a second? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 Budget is approved. Our twenty, twenty-one twenty-two budget is approved. Okay, let's move on to, I'm going to move item seven E.
E-scheduled.
What? What?
I think you, you need to adopt the fee schedule also.
The fee schedule needs to be adopted also.
That was the budget ordinance.
Okay, we need to do that. Where is that? Okay.
May I move to approve the fee schedule for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two as presented to this council tonight with the adjustments in fees as stated previously.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now, I was asked to move seven E, so you could do that now. Sam?
Thank you.
C.
C. Is it C?
E.
Seven E.
Okay, so, the Finance Department requested proposals for third-party collection services for the collection of delinquent utilities, property taxes, and miscellaneous debts. We received three responses, and they were all very highly qualified responses. I am recommending that the town select LifeQuest Services to conduct this service for the town. So, LifeQuest has the highest average collection rate at the lowest fee. LifeQuest's average collection rate is between fifteen and sixty percent, and the fee is thirteen percent of whatever they collect. The company also specializes in collections for governmental entities and has over two hundred municipal clients nationally. So, LifeQuest will also work with the Finance Department to implement a customized collection strategy tailored to the town's needs. The company also has advanced security measures in place for securing customer information. So, just as a frame of reference, we currently have approximately two hundred thousand dollars in delinquent accounts receivable. That includes utilities and taxes as well. I'm hopeful that contracting with LifeQuest will result in between fifty and seventy-five thousand in net collections.
About two hundred thousand, how much is the utility? Do you know?
About a hundred and, it's a little, each one is a little over a hundred thousand.
Counsel, do I hear a motion that we select LifeQuest Services to collect our delinquent bills?
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much. Now, let's move to our old business, six A, the Windy Oak Drainage Improvement Project, and.
Needing mayor, members of the council, my name is Mike Socks. I've been asked by your town manager to give you a quick update on the Windy Oaks project. The plans are complete, and they are currently out to bid. On May twenty-eighth, we contacted ten different contractors via email, told them that the plans were out to bid. The bids are set to be received on July first. We extended it an extra week just due to the times and the way we are hoping to get more participation, but they are due on July first. There is a pre-bid meeting set up with any and all contractors interested in the project on June the tenth. Just to recap a few specifics about the project, there's a ten percent MBE participation requirement, and those bidding the project will need to go ahead and start that paperwork in order to be eligible to claim that, to claim the MBE status through the bid process, and July first will give them adequate time to do that. The project will consist of approximately five hundred and fifty linear feet of ditch repairs, upgrades between Windy Oak Drive and Laurel Spring Drive. The project will also include around four hundred and twenty-four linear feet of forty-eight-inch pipe, thirty-three foot of fifteen-inch pipe, some drop inlets, drainage and structures, and to remove approximately twenty-four foot of twenty-four-inch pipe. Quickly, the design or pre-designed budget in the initial study report was three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. The current engineer's estimate for this project is running around three hundred and seven thousand. We have tried to factor in the, the price of materials increase, the, you know, the COVID process, just the availability of materials and laborers, et cetera, but we do think the project is running around ten to fifteen thousand under the initial budget numbers, but that remains to be seen. We will know on July first when we open the bids. With that, mayor, if there's any questions, I will try to ask, answer them.
Counsel, do you have any questions? If not, do I hear a motion that we approve Resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirteen, the Windy Oak Drainage Improvement Project?
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
Louise, I didn't hear you.
I said aye.
Aye, okay, motion carries. So, we'll move on with that. Our next item in the old business is, is decision on granting RBD investments incorporated as special use permit, SU two thousand twenty-one dash oh-two, for residential planned unit development on a hundred and ten acres of the former Birchwood Golf Course along Birchwood Drive in Nashville. I'll turn this over to our planner, Sherry. Boss?
Good afternoon, everyone. So, the last meeting we had on this item was held on May eleventh, in which the town council held a public hearing here on RBD investments, which they had a request for a special use permit, SU two thousand twenty-one dash zero-two, for residential planned unit development that consists of a hundred and ten acres on the former Birchwood Golf Course along Birchwood Drive in Nashville. And at this quasi-judicial public hearing, the council heard testimony and received evidence from the applicant and other experts on how the applicant's planned unit development meets the residential PUD requirements in sections eighteen dash one thirteen, eighteen dash one fifteen, and eighteen dash one sixteen of the Nashville Land Use Ordinance. A decision on granting a special use permit was tabled into tonight's meeting to allow time for the applicant to revise his concept plan for better label and show the required open space areas. The extra time also allowed the town attorney to render a legal opinion on seemingly conflicting lot size requirements in section eighteen dash one thirteen and eighteen dash one fifteen, and for council members to consider the testimony and the submitted evidence. Attached in the packet that you have tonight is the applicant's revised concept, concept plan, along with the town attorney's legal opinion on the ordinance, on the land use ordinance, ordinances, conflicting lot size requirement, and also questions that I distributed to you from Councilwoman Kate Burns. And also, in addition, in granting or denying a special use permit, the council shall make the following findings of fact. One, that the proposed use will not materially endanger the public health or safety. Two, that the use meets all applicable required conditions and specifications, specifically sections eighteen dash one thirteen, fifteen, and sixteen of the Nashville Land Use Ordinance. Three, that the ordinance will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, or that the use is a public necessity. Four, that the location and character of the use will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located, and in general conformity with the land, I'm sorry, with the plan of the development of the town. The council may require additional conditions to ensure that the use will be harmonious with the surrounding area and keeping with the, keeping with the spirit and the intent of the land use ordinance. A decision to deny must state the reasons for the denial. The decision must be based on the testimony and evidence given at the public hearing and the above findings of fact. Not all four findings of fact need to be met to deny a special use permit request. And if this is approved, the next steps would be for TRC to review the construction plan, followed by the planning board review and approval or denial, and town council, town council decision. And also, a final plan will also have to be submitted for the planning board, for planning board and town council approval. And if you have any questions, the applicant or Mike Socks is here.
Are there any questions from the council?
I have more of a concern, which is that, you know, while we did hear this a little while ago, a few weeks ago, we just received quite a few updates on Friday afternoon, Saturday over the weekend, and even today. For me, I don't want to make what feels like it could be a rushed decision. I hate to push it off anymore, but just to digest what we've received over the last couple of days and even today, I, I would love to decide this at our next meeting instead.
Do you want to make that in form of a motion?
If I have agreement, I'll make that in a motion.
And mayor, I, I agree with her before, a slightly different reason, no disrespect to Mr. Socks who's in the audience right, but I would like to have another engineer to come forth and answer the questions that we asked them a couple of weeks ago about, about this project, simply because Mr. Socks represents the builder. I need somebody to answer some questions that has no, doesn't have a dog in this fight. So, I, I agree with pushing it off for the next meeting.
Okay, so I assume that's a motion, this is a second.
I'll second.
Those in favor of waiting to our next meeting to make a decision of this, let it be known by saying.
But we need to get that other expert in here at some time to answer some questions.
Could, could we hear Mr. Edwards' explanation of, you know, the email that we received concerning the lots and the lot sizes and whatnot?
Oh, yes. Now, before I get into the specifics, I mean, I mentioned that, this repeats a lot of what my memo says, of course, that there's questions about open space, there's questions about minimum lot sizes, and there's questions about density. Now, just, just keep in mind, those are all different concepts and need to be addressed. You know, they're very closely related, so when you start talking about one, it's easy to get mixed up, you just kind of slide in and talk about something else. So, if there are questions about minimum lot sizes, that's one thing. If there's questions about open space, that's another thing. If there's questions about density, we need to talk about those, but if we're gonna talk about those, they need to be separate from each other because they're dealt with separately in the ordinances. And so, my memo was dealing with minimum lot sizes. Every type of use in the zoning ordinance has a minimum lot size, or has, when you look at a use, it talks about the lot size for that particular use. And of course, there's a wide variety of uses, but in this particular development, there's only two uses of the land. Some of the land is used for single-family, and some of the land is used for townhouses. So, when trying to figure out what the minimum lot size should be, we need to only worry about what the minimum, minimum lot size has to be for single-family lots, and what the minimum lot size has to be for townhouses. And on the single.
Can I just stop you right here, though? Isn't the overarching requirement in our planned unit development section for lot sizes?
It'd be, the same, there's one rule, when it comes, I think when it comes to planned unit development, there's one rule that covers the whole development, which is that any lot in the development cannot be reduced more than fifty percent. But then, once again, you have to look at the particular use of that lot.
You don't, because it says more than fifty percent in the, the district in which, in which it's in. It's an R-ten district.
Correct.
So, it cannot be smaller than five thousand square feet.
Well, to, to answer the question, then you would have to go to, so it's like if you were in an R-eight or, or, or something else.
Right, that would differ.
Then, like, if you were looking, if you were gonna use a lot in R-four for a single-family lot, then that tells you what the minimum lot size is in that district. But yet, if you were gonna use that same piece of property for a duplex in R-four, then the minimum lot size for a duplex is gonna be different than the minimum lot size for a single-family residence in R-four. So, the minimum lot size for a piece, for a particular lot has to do with how you're using that.
But it doesn't say that in the PUD. It doesn't say, look to the, the use that you're proposing. It says that you have to look to the district in which it's located, which is in R-ten.
Correct, right, and in R-ten, like, if you were gonna build an apart, just for, assuming you could build an apartment in R-ten, then the minimum lot size for an apartment is gonna be different than the minimum lot size for a single-family residence. So, the thing, the minimum lot size is not gonna be the same for every lot across the development. If some of the development is single-family, some of the development is duplex, some is apartment, some is something else. And so, here, if there were other uses in the development other than single-family and townhouses, we would have to look at what the minimum lot size was for that. But here, it's just the two things that we have to look at, single-family and townhouses. And the way I read it is, for the, for the, for the portion of the development that's for a single-family, as you mentioned, it's a ten thousand, ten, ten, ten thousand square foot minimum normally, but in the PUD, the developer gets to reduce it down, and the developer can reduce it all the way down to fifty percent, which is five thousand. So, then, when you try to take the same concept over to townhouses, there is no minimum lot size for a townhouse. And that's the way it is in the ordinance. The way a townhouse development is, is that you have the, the piece of property, and you have, on that piece of property, parking, and maybe right away from the street, but otherwise, it's the site, it's the building itself, which is what somebody's gonna own, and then what's around the building is called the common area, and the person who owns the building doesn't own the common area, they only own the unit. Now, of course, you have homeowner for, for residential, you have restrictive covenants and all that that govern how all of that works together, but you have the site and you have the common area. But to kind of bring it back to this question, there is no minimum lot size for a townhome. So, since there's no minimum, the way I read it is that if the minimum is zero, then the developer can't reduce it by a percentage because you can't reduce zero. That's the way.
I, I feel like it's a simpler reading, and that it says, in no case shall these minimum lot requirements be less than fifty percent of the minimum lot requirements for the district. And so, I'm looking at the R-ten district. And it, it also says that the design standards for planned unit developments shall be applicable to townhouse developments. So, to me, that, they go hand in hand. And then, it was brought up with the whole density requirement as well, and I understand that that's kind of a separate issue, but it, it ties into this. Where the density requirements of townhomes, it does say that the, that it needs to meet the density requirements of the district in which it's located, which is the R-ten. So, the density requirements say that you can't have more than four, what is it, four, four lots per acre for the density requirements?
Was it that where there's like the twenty-five and the thirty-six?
No.
And here, thirty-six?
It was four per acre. It was four lots per acre. So, I still don't understand how we can have six townhomes on a quarter-acre lot.
Once again, that's density.
Right, but it, it ties in with.
Well, density doesn't have anything to do with minimum lot size. So, I mean, I, we could talk about both, but minimum lot size doesn't have anything to do with density.
I, yeah, I, I, I def, I disagree with the reading where basically it's saying, the PUD says there's no exception to this, and no case shall it be less than fifty percent of what the district states. The district states it's ten thousand, so in no case it can be less than five thousand.
So, the question is, what is the minimum lot size for a townhome? And if you go to.
It doesn't say for the proposed building type in the district, it just says the requirements for the district in R-ten.
For example, a minimum lots, you could have the same acre or same lot, and if you're gonna build a house on it, that, that lot has to be ten thousand square feet. For that same area, if you were gonna put a duplex, it has to be twelve thousand square feet. So, if the developer was deciding to put a duplex out there, we would say you could reduce that lot only down to six thousand because the minimum lot requirements for a duplex is different than a minimum lot size for a single-family house. So, the ten thousand square foot requirement is only for single families, and you can't take that and apply it to duplexes or to townhomes. You look at the requirements for single-family lots for single-family lots, and you look at the requirements for townhomes for townhomes. And, and if you look at the definition of a townhome in the town ordinance, which is at the end of my, near the end of my memo, even within the definition of a townhome, it recognizes in the ordinance that townhomes do not meet conventional lot requirements for street frontages and yard sizes.
But it also says that the design standards for planned unit developments shall be applicable to townhome developments.
Yes, exactly, yes.
How are we not talking about?
Sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
How are we not talking about that, part of that design?
The, the developer will have to meet all the design standards for townhomes. The developer will have to meet all the design standards for townhomes that are in the townhome section of the ordinances. And lot size is just one aspect of development of a townhome. I mean, there are other aspects of what a townhome development must meet. And they must meet all their requirements. But when you look in there, which is in that 18-116, paragraph 33, that talks about townhomes, that, all the design standards in that whole section, there's nothing about a minimum lot size.
No, I understand that. And I understand what you're saying. I just, I don't read this the same way that you're reading it.
Sure, and, yeah. Yes, and I'm just, you make the decision, yeah, you make the decision.
So we have a motion that we postpone this until our next meeting. And we have from Councilman Taylor that we get another, are you saying engineer in here to answer questions, or what? I didn't quite understand that, Mr. Taylor.
I did say engineer, but I think what I probably need to do is meet with our attorney, and let him, he may be able to answer some questions for us. So I'll just second case request.
All those in favor of us waiting to make a decision on this, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. We will address this at our next meeting. Thank you. Can I do that? Okay, I want to make sure I'm legal.
Yes.
Yes.
Come up here, though.
All of you, all of you know me, I'm Robbie Davis, and I've been in development business about 40 years now. And, you know, these delays are costing our company a tremendous amount of money. I know this is an important thing to you, and you want to get it right. What I'd like to do, if it's possible, to clear this up, I thought I was going to talk to each one of you individually. I got hold of one of you. And then I decided probably what the best idea to try to do there. If there's some way we could schedule a meeting with your attorneys, if I need to bring an attorney, I will, I don't really think I need one. And y'all guide me to what you want. I mean, I can't continue to sit and do nothing. What you're going to force me to do is, I'm just going to have to develop a, there's all single-family homes. And I can put the same number of units on there. Actually, I can put more than what I'm proposing here. And just R-10, build them all R-10. But I'm going to eat up every bit of the land out there, and it's really not what I wanted to do. I wanted to give you something much nicer than that. I hear you talk about, and what my request is simply, to figure out a way we can sit down around a table and work this out, so y'all can be happy and so we can move on. Because, you know, we're right where we were 30 days ago. We haven't really accomplished anything. It doesn't look like to me. Katie, I get what you're saying, but what you're saying is, the smallest townhome I can build is 5,000 square feet?
Right, no, I understand that there's a conflict in the language. And I understand that it's unreasonable to have a townhouse that large. I would love to sit down and discuss this. No, I understand. I would love to discuss it, because I, my major concern is actually open space, where I think that the purpose of the PUD is to preserve as much open space as possible. And it talks about specific things, like each one needs to be at least an acre large. And I feel like there's a big miscommunication on what the purpose of the PUD is and what we received in actuality. If there's a way that we can sit down and discuss this, I think that's a great idea. I just don't know if that's possible.
And if you don't want the PUD, I'll drop.
No, I don't think it's a bad idea. I love the idea. It's just that I think open space should have been number one, and it's like far back in the background of what this, of what this is. Like, we have little slivers of property that are clearly not an acre, not anything more than an acre.
I've met your requirements for open space.
Well, you're counting front yards and backyards on your townhomes and your duplexes, though. That's not open space. I can't come and kick a soccer ball on your front lawn. I can't put my lawn chair there and grill a hot dog.
I've met your 35% requirement, and I've given you a lot of open space.
It's unusable, open space. That's, that does not give access to all.
But you have, so, again, we don't need to get into detail tonight. We need to sit around the table and do that, if we can. But if we can't, and you don't want what I got, just let me know, and quit, you know, stop delaying me, and let me move forward. Yeah, the developers that looked at this property, they were going to do all single-family, and I can certainly do that. I'd be better off financially to do that. But it's just not what primarily my son wants to do. We've heard what the people want. They want some senior villages out there. You've got a lot of people that live there, and you've got a lot of people that live in Nashville that want a place they can move to, finish out their life, that they don't have to maintain anything. That's what we want to do for you here in Nashville. I hear you talk about during the budget discussion, you want to bring more young people here. That's what we'll be doing. We'll be building affordable houses that young people from other areas can come in and afford to buy. But if we miss this one, we could be stalemateed for a very long time. I hear you talking about producing revenue, Mayor, which is very, very important. This project, as drawn, will produce you over the next 10-12-year period about somewhere between 112 million and 118 million in total increase in assessed value of the town. That relates to somewhere between $500,000 and $600,000 annually at the end of this thing of what your revenue would increase. You had a meeting, Economic Development, and I spoke to Oppie, and Norris, as they were leaving. You won't ever get an opportunity to bring an industry in here that brings 112 to 116, 18 million dollars worth of increased value to Nashville. Allowing this project to be done would do that. I mean, it's just guaranteed to do that. It's not going to be quick. It's going to be a 10-year build-out. We knew that going into it. But we've really got to get started sooner than later. And if it's just not going to work the way we presented it, I'd like to know real soon so we can redraw it, get all single-family lots, and we'll just move forward like that. And we don't have to have rezoning, we don't have to have anything. But it's really not what Jason wants to do. I'm not going to be worried about it 10, 12 years from now. But I thank a lot of all my children, and I thank a great deal of him and his ideas. But I just plead with you to find a way we can sit down, come to some agreement, and not just keep backing it up, backing it up, backing it up. Thank you, and I appreciate, Mayor, you giving me the opportunity to speak to you about this.
Thank you.
Is that possible? I don't even know that it's allowed.
Now, tell me the legal part of this.
It gets, it's complicated. This is a quasi-judicial decision. And the only evidence that the council is to consider in making this decision and granting this special use has to come at that public hearing we had or at a follow-up meeting such as this, where you've asked for additional. I don't have the exact answer for you. I would love to do what Robbie is suggesting, because everybody, going forward then, would have some degree of comfort of what's going to be there. And Mark, I don't know if you're prepared to speak to that here today. It's probably another question we have to defer to our attorney for research on whether or not it is even allowable under state law for the council, the decision-making body, on a quasi-judicial meeting, to have a Neller meeting with the proposed developer. I'm thinking it's probably okay in an open session and properly called meeting, but it certainly isn't on one-on-one basis. That's ex parte communication, and it's prohibited by the state of North Carolina's general statute.
I could go back a little more, but I would tend to, I mean, I agree with, that's at least my, off the top of my head, assessment.
Our attorney can check to make sure that it stands for us, because I don't want to do anything that's not right. I know. Okay, so we will, you can get your answers, you said, from our attorney.
I think I can.
So we will move forward, and we'll make a decision next time. Thank you.
Mayor, that meeting would be June 15th, that's our next scheduled council meeting.
Okay. June 15th. Our next item is to review the bids received for a second risk assessment by the arborist for Washington Street, right-of-way trees between Austin Street and First Street. Coy?
Right, council approved a motion on May 25th to seek a second opinion for an additional risk assessment on the mature trees on Washington Street between First Street and Austin. We have reached out to five arborists requesting quotes. Two arborists have submitted quotes for conducting the assessment. They're attached for council's review. And at 5:00 today, I did receive an additional quote, which I gave you a copy of from Davy Resource Group, and I do have some additional copies, if anyone would like one of those.
Are there any questions from the council, or any input?
So it's $250 per tree?
Which one are you on?
I'm looking at Bartlett.
They gave two quotes. It depends on the level of the assessment. So the first assessment we did was a level two. So if you got the same assessment done by Bartlett Tree Company, it would be $150 per tree, which comes out to, if you did all 36, that's $5,400. The level three assessment is just the next tier up.
It's $9,000.
It's $9,000.
Now, what if we lowered that level three assessment just to the subject, what is it, 13 trees now that are like the high, high-risk ones? Maybe, or?
And we can, let's see, I think we're down to 12.
12.
12 trees, thank you.
Three that were taken off.
So that would, that would still come out to $3,000 if we did that?
Okay.
Is there a possibility, Coy, that you could collaborate with Mr. Hyde, and maybe we could ban someone for, restore them all reasonable?
I think he spoke to that already.
Yeah.
This needs to be a public bid. I think we need to do it within the confines of council and staff. And we've already put it out, and there have been five that you received, or five that you?
I've received three. I reached out to five, using that list that I got from the Co-op Extension, which is what Mr. Hyde had mentioned before. But from that list, you know, you can type in your zip code, and it'll give you all certified arborists within a certain range of Nashville. Out of those that are certified arborists, I also went for the ones that had the specific certification to do risk assessments. Out of those five, we heard, I heard back from three. One of them told me they're no longer a practicing arborist, and the other one told me that they did not do risk assessments, and actually referred me back to Mr. Sugg, who was who we had the first time.
So our only option looks like is to go with this company?
Well, there's three.
There's three. We have the other one.
But getting back to the one that Mr. Hyde alluded to, this would not be a bid based on what he, so, Les, can we just contact the person?
He already has.
In Arkola?
He's already contacted.
The one in Arkola?
The extension.
I reached out to the Nash County Co-op Extension, Matt Stevens. And they, they will come out and provide that service for you to do an assessment, but not, not a risk assessment. What he said is when there's risk involved, they refer that to a certified arborist to do that.
But it wouldn't hurt to have him to come and do an assessment. That's another opinion.
And I asked him to do that, but since we already had a certified arborist do that, he said that he was inclined to go with their initial assessment.
So what are your thoughts, council?
So can you just go through the three bids, Coy? So we just went through the Bartlett with the level two or level three assessment and what the cost differences would be for that.
So the next one was a company called Historic Tree Care. They gave an hourly rate for that. It comes out, if you do it per tree, it was $6,750 per tree for that one. It sounds like he has, hence the name, but he has a lot of experience with these historic trees and trying to do everything he can in order to mitigate the risk without removing that tree, if it's possible, just with my conversation with him. And then the Davy Resource Group quote, again, they gave two quotes. And I'm assuming on here, it's on page three of that, they have two different prices. They have the same services listed. I'm assuming that top one is for a level three assessment at that $4,500. And then the $2,700 is a level two. That $2,700 comes out to $75 per tree. So if you do a per trees, per tree price, Historic Tree Care is the cheapest of the three.
Where is he getting this 18 hours from?
That, I, when I spoke to him, I told him the scope of the work, the 36 trees where they were located. And I guess that's just what he's getting from his travel time. I believe he was based out of Apex, says Durham here. But between travel time and doing a report for us and actually assessing the trees, that's the number he came up with.
Well, Historic Tree is the cheapest one, isn't it?
And I know originally, you know, we, you know, had requested that somebody come in, we remove all the markings and have a fresh set of eyes. If you did want to get that cost down, we could take out the trees that we know are healthy, so we're not having another assessment done on healthy trees. And that would get us down to doing an assessment on 21 rather than 36. That would require me to mark those 21 trees. The arborist coming in would not know whether they were slated for pruning or removal. But he would know.
That's a good idea, Coy.
Because why do we need to, why do we need to inspect a healthy tree?
And if you wanted to go a step further, as was said at the last meeting, there were about five trees that, and I have pictures of those five and the numbers for them, that are just degraded to the point that I don't, I don't see how any arborist would tell us not to remove these five trees. So if you take those out, now we're down to 16 that we're doing an assessment on. And I've only got one copy of these, I can certainly pass them around. I mean, you know, one of them's completely dead, still standing. Tree number five, you can see in the trunk how much it's degraded. Tree 14, again, it has no top, and you can see how degraded the trunk is. Tree 17 does not have a top.
That one was hollow, I think, in the middle.
And tree 18 doesn't look as bad if you look at it far away, but if you look at the trunk from the street side, you can also see that it has severe decay. So if you took those five out as well.
I'd be hesitant to take at least a few of those out, just because if you're looking at them from far away, they do look like they're fine. And I don't expect each individual person to come and walk the trees. I'm guessing the ones that don't even have tops and are clearly hollow, we could probably take out. But, I mean, I'd rather err on the side of caution and just do them all.
I think since the public asked us to go back and revisit this, that I agree that those that we deem are healthy, let's take those out. But then leave all of the other trees and let the arborist who's judging make a decision based on what's there.
Based on that, I propose that we use the Historic Tree Care service.
There's been a motion and a second to using the Historic Tree Care. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. So Coy, if you contact them, we'll get all of our trees straightened.
And that's just for 21, we said?
Yeah.
Excuse me?
I thought you said you cut it down to 16?
No, that's if we take these out, which some of them. No, that's if we take these out, which some of them are, are obvious, some of them are not so obvious.
Okay.
I would just like to inform the council and the public, we have heard back from Rodney with the DOT, asking the question if the DOT would be willing to prune the trees that could possibly save if they had significant pruning to them. They are not. It's, it's one cut or they don't do anything with it. Now, we said that the council can hire somebody to trim those and, and maybe work on the cost of that with whomever the property owner of budding that tree is to have it pruned, but they, they won't do that.
Okay. And Historic Tree Care, and I don't believe they put it on here, he told me he would be able to come on June 14th. I'll reach out to him and make sure he's still able to do that. So prior to that, I will be flagging those 21 trees with, with pink ribbon before then.
And if he can't come before the 14th, we appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Coy.
Could you let us know when he, you know, what time he's going to be here and all that?
Yes, ma'am.
So that it, can we walk it with him or?
I, I can certainly ask.
Now let's move on to new business. The first item of new business is personnel policy revision and passage of resolution number 2021-12. And you've read all of that. It says upon review of the current personnel policy, several articles are in need of revision. I am requesting that these amendments be provided to the town council for consideration at the June 1st, 2021 regular town council meeting. If approved, these amendments would be effective July 1, 2021, and copies of these amendments will be distributed to each party holding a copy of the personnel policy. I'm sure you looked through this and read that.
Yes, I have one question, I suppose, for Randy on this, on page 259, Randy, Article five, I mean, excuse me, Article seven, number five, Article seven. In the yellow highlighting, it reads, "Any employee who is able to do telework will be expected to do so during an emergency or inclement weather event." My only question would be if it's such an emergency that their internet would be down, is there some concession that might need to be made in that case and be noted here?
There, there would. Good point. I don't know if Lou and I didn't discuss that at all, but you bring up a good point. If you get an ice storm, all the lines come down, you very, could be without internet.
Right. Just subject to that.
So will, yeah.
Availability.
I have a question on page 257. The highlighted area, okay, approved by the supervisor. Okay, must, must be approved by the supervisor at that point. So all employees should absolutely know who their supervisor is?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Any other questions, council? Do I hear a, a motion that we approve the resolution 2021-12 with that correction?
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Our next new business, this is 7B, and that is supporting the grant application under the EEG program passage of resolution number 2021-14. And that is Coy. Is he here?
He's coming.
He's coming. This might be the last time you hear from me. The Office of the North Carolina Attorney General has issued a request for proposals to identify environmental enhancement projects contemplated by the Smithfield Agreement for reimbursement under the Environmental Enhancement Grant Program. The EEG program offers reimbursement grants for projects that improve North Carolina's air, water, and land quality. The Parks and Rec Department would like to apply for the EEG program in the amount of $250,000 to purchase 48.12 acres from GSM properties to preserve and protect this natural area. Applications are due June 24th and grants are awarded in the spring 2022. A letter of intent was submitted on May 18th so that the town is eligible to apply for the program. And this grant does not require a match. And it's only open to people that submitted a letter of intent. So that's why we went ahead and did that, so I could sit through the webinar and see if this is something we might be interested in. If that is something that you would like us to pursue, we do need a resolution showing support from the council.
All 48 acres are wetland.
They have to be. I asked if we could be acquiring any dry land that we can preserve as open space, and the answer is no.
So that breaks down to about $5,208 per acre?
Approximately. If you guys remember, we, the council approved an application of this same program two years ago for the Wendy Oak Drains project. We didn't get it. They are looking for, from the webinar that Coy sat in on this, they're, they're looking for environmentally sensitive lands, such as those along creek bottoms in this particular watershed. This 48 acres is that. 23 goes through it. There's parts on either side. It matches up nicely with our environmental park. It matches up with the Smith property that the town got as a gift several years back. And it would be a perfect opportunity to put in a, a wetland preserve and also have land available then that we could put in an outdoor classroom to demonstrate best practices for, for water quality and sediment management, things like that, plus, you know, put a trail through so you could get different aspects of it.
Can that be part of the grant application? Can we actually put in for walking trail, nature preserve?
During the webinar, they made it clear they wanted you to focus on the environmental aspect of it and less on the recreation component that comes with it.
How about education on?
We could definitely include the environmental education.
Okay, great.
How much is it going to cost for us to preserve and protect this area? And what does that entail? We don't have any money.
There's no cost.
Larry, I don't see.
It's a 100% grant.
I mean, not for the grant, there's no cost for the grant, but then.
But you, you leave the property go to nature, basically.
Just leave it alone.
Right.
You preserve it, that's what they want.
What I want to say about it, I, I had an awful lot of concern with that property being logged in another 20 years. And many of the loggers, they come through, take what they want and leave everything else. Well, the next time the creek floods, all that stuff floats and it's going to end up on the Washington Bridge. And we're going to have serious problems with that debris. This would allow us to acquire that property and make sure it never gets logged again. So we don't necessarily have to worry about it to that degree.
But aren't we doing some logging ourselves of wetland?
We are, but if you require, if you recall, Louise, we required in our contract all the treetops be chipped and any of the things left behind get hauled out.
But still, we're doing some logging ourselves.
Yes, yes. We, we have 35 acres of that Smith property that we do have a logging contract with a logging company. But it's not going to be tops left over. It's not going to be logs left laying all over. We, we put that in our specifications. Maybe why we didn't get as much money for, for the timber that they, but, you know, it was, in my opinion, the responsible thing to do.
I would remind everybody that the environmental park that we have and the Smith land, all of that was donated.
I mean, this essentially is that. If we receive a 100% grant, it's being purchased by someone else and donated to us.
It's still money.
That we can't spend anywhere else.
It's still somebody else's money.
So if we were to add an outdoor classroom or a trail, there would be some maintenance costs, but it would be, it would be minimal.
Council?
I move that we apply for the grant.
Second.
The second. All those in favor of us applying for the, the grant, let it be known by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Our next item on our agenda is, let's see. Okay, is, we did the EET passage. 7C. Got everything. All right, this is bicycle and pedestrian planning grant, Sherry Moss.
All right, so this grant we have here is through NC DOT. We currently have a pedestrian, comprehensive plan for a pedestrian plan, but that plan was adopted back in 2008 and it was suggested that we, you know, just go ahead and do another one. So this will be Coy and I will be working on this together, the joint effort for this application. And so with this, with this grant, so the NC DOT encourages municipalities to develop comprehensive plans for bicycle and pedestrian pathways. And since our population, we range in between 5,000 and 10,000, we're eligible to apply for a combined bicycle and pedestrian plan. So, and that, and so now we're, staff is seeking to apply for bicycle and pedestrian planning grant funds. And based on the, also based on our population, the estimated cost for consulting costs will range anywhere between $40,000 to $50,000, which DOT participation will cover or provide 90% of the cost. And the town is responsible for that 10%. And so, and also the actual cost varies depending upon the size of municipality and the complexity of issues to be addressed. And with this comprehensive bicycle and pedestrian plan, it offers an assessment of the entire community, which includes an extensive analysis of the existing conditions, followed by an approach for developing, developing guidance and recommendations. Recommendations are made on short, mid, and long-term projects as well as policy program elements and strategies for implementation. So this application is due June 30th. Signed resolutions from both municipality and PO are required to be submitted with the application. And I have contacted Bob Lee with Rocky Mount NPO for, also for supporting resolution.
Thank you. Counsel, are there any questions? Recommendations? So we pay 10%?
So we would be looking at $4,000 to $5,000 in town match.
Yes. I move that we move forward with applying for the grant.
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. We'll move on with the grant. Our next new business is review and approval of resolution 2021-16 authorizing the submission of a building reuse grant application to the North Carolina Department of Commerce for Project ANF Building Renovation in the town of Nashville. Randy, would you like to talk?
Sure. So the town has a wonderful opportunity to work with one of its current businesses on a expansion project, both in size and jobs. And the North Carolina Department of Commerce Building Reuse Program is available for towns, municipalities in tier one and tier two town, counties to assist businesses and industries in renovating and expanding buildings and facilities to create new jobs. Our partnership with Carolina Gateway Partnership and Rocky Mount, we have the opportunity to assist the local business with a sizable building expansion project in the form of a building reuse grant application. So as an economic development project, the North Carolina General Statute 143, 318-11, A4 allows towns to honor businesses' requests not to disclose the business name at this time. So we have put the business in a code name. This is an application that needs to be submitted by June 23rd. And there, there is a resolution authorizing submission of this building and reuse grant application for the ANF Building Renovation Project.
Randy, how much is that grant? I mean, how much is, what amount of money are we talking about?
So I, I'm, I'm thinking based on the, on the size of the private investment and the number of jobs, it could be upwards to $500,000.
Any other questions, council?
I move to approve the resolution.
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 Resolution carries. And we've covered 7E, so we'll move right over to 7L. Review and discuss the Forest Hills Cemetery rules and regulations and devise a plan of enforcement.
And, you know, we've had, you've had quite a, quite an evening in length here, but, you know, let, let me summarize the situation. The Forest Hill Cemetery is the town's municipal cemetery, and it's got a number of sections. And some of those sections, I and H, have rules that are different than the other sections, the older sections. And those rules prohibit the use of borders and decorative rock over top of the graves. Both in section I and H, if you've been up there and gone through maybe Memorial Day, you may have seen those. It has been problematic to get ahold of the next of kin of those graves that have that on, to inform them of the rules. The people who were buried there were the ones that the rules were explained to when they bought the plot or, or the graves. They're no longer with us. And unfortunately, I don't believe that they left word for next of kin about what those rules are. But we, we also have people who have loved ones buried in those sections who are aware of those rules. And they want them enforced. You know, they, they chose those particular sections of the cemetery because of the rules. And of course, you know, they get offended when you see people violating the rules. Having said that, the last time the town staff went through and took things off graves, it, it, it brought mayhem to, to the town and to the town council at the time from what I was told. So what we would like to do is collaborate with the council to come up with a way of enforcement. I know in the past, things have been posted in the newspaper as a public notice that after such a day, anything left on a grave was going to be picked up and taken away. That only reaches a small amount of people who have loved ones buried in our, in our cemetery. And we do have perpetual maintenance that, that a few of our, our graves are still hanging into, where we, we can send somebody a letter and hopefully there's a recipient on the other end. But again, there's no guarantee on that. You know, I, I guess in, in the event of time here this morning, this evening, I would like to recommend to the council that we all think between now and our next council meeting, of effective ways that we can communicate with the public about enforcing the rules here without getting overly aggressive with it and at the same time offending a lot of people. Like I said, I, I've been told by, by the town staff, the last time they took things off graves, all heck broke loose. People were very angry and very upset with that. But it is, you know, the rules are there.
When, when somebody sees, when you're out there putting rock and borders, that's pretty obvious because that would take some equipment, wouldn't it? A truck at least, I would think.
Delivery of the gravel.
So, I mean, the guys who are working out there, would, would they observe that? I mean, is there someone out there most of the time who would see?
I've been told that stuff happens on weekends when people have time to do it. And our guys, unless, you know, somebody's having a special burial, they're, they're not up there on the weekends.
With the gravel and the borders, I understand it's allowed in some, some sections and not allowed in others. But isn't it a problem globally where if you don't maintain it properly, then we have a problem with, you know, weeding and spraying and doing all that?
It, it is. Where, where, you know, these, these are fresh additions to the graves and people take care of them, there aren't problems. But I, I think you saw one of the complaints that we received, a grave that had that and hadn't been taken care of in a number of years. And, you know, you just can't move over the top of there. You can scatter those decorative stones everywhere and make a grime. So then it requires the guys to do extra weed eating around that particular grave. And in some cases, you know, it's easiest to, to use a, a chemical on that. But again, that takes extra time.
So I guess my, my thought was, why don't we, we have the rules that have existed until now, but why don't we maybe rewrite them so that it prohibits the use of gravel and borders anywhere in the cemetery? And then for those who are upkeeping it, they're not going to have a problem because they're sort of grandfathered into this. And those that are violating it and not upkeeping it, then we can actually go in there and remediate and remove. But that's just a thought.
Well, we need, I think we just need to study it. Look, you need to write out there. I was amazed. I was amazed when I wrote out there and looked, once we had a concern, you need to just write out there and look, and you'll see exactly that we need to do something.
Sure.
When someone purchases a plot, do they get all of these rules and regulations in hand? Okay, so, those are maybe tossed or whatever, and?
Not passed on to whoever's maintaining the grave.
Yeah, yeah. And any ideas you can come up with how to effectively communicate with our community about the enforcement of these rules, would be greatly appreciated.
Can we, can we somehow post those rules at the interest of the cemetery?
It's, it's been thought about. Other people feel that's tacky and disrespectful, the people who are there.
Where are we?
We, we've even talked about having a small sign when you drive into the, uh, we'll, we'll take Coy's FM broadcaster, that he broadcasts his movies on the car radios and tuned to this particular frequency, and it just is a constant playover, playover, playover of the rules of the cemetery. In, in my thought, that's, that's not overly offensive or obnoxious. I don't know if it'll work, but just out of the box ideas on, on how to effectively communicate this.
Let us just think.
Can we move this to our next meeting?
Yeah.
June fourteenth meeting?
Yeah, that'd be good.
No matter what we do, we're going, we're going to make somebody else, that's all.
I make a motion that we table this item until our next June meeting, which?
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
We will discuss that at the next meeting. And I think that concludes everything on our agenda.
We've got a budget amendment.
Seven G.
No, we've got a budget amendment.
Oh, we do, that's right.
Police block grant.
Huh?
Police block grant.
Right. The police block grant. Is he here tonight?
He is.
There you are. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to forget you.
No, that's fine.
You're still important.
You had the information in your packet, but what this is, it's a block grant from the Govers Crown Foundation, it was zero match grant. The block grant includes cameras and tasers, but because of the grant being approved just two months ago, I had to reacquisition to get some more quotes for the body cameras. Um, and that money and funding is not included in this fiscal year, but it is one hundred percent reimbursed. So, what we're asking is the fourteen thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars to purchase the body worn cameras, because the cameras that we acquired from the sheriff's office are no longer applicable.
And this will be reimbursed when we do?
This is one hundred percent reimbursed, that's correct. The, the, the total, the total of the grant's twenty-four thousand four hundred and eighty-seven dollars. The rest of the monies is funded toward, um, electric, uh, ki, uh, electric weapons or tasers.
Council?
I move that we, uh, do this budget amendment.
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Amendment, uh, we will approve. Thank you so much. Um, do you have any other comments, um, town manager?
I do not.
Councilman?
Not a.
Thank you for coming out tonight so very much, and, uh, we appreciate you, and have a good rest of the week.
Hi, so moved.
Oh, do I hear a motion that we adjourn? Sure, we're ready to get out of here tonight.
It's hot.
It is, ma'am.
What?